There is no... There is no standard that the centre of the budget on education and on health is given the top priority. We are happy for that. There are so many developmental projects. If you are here, you came to Kano about 10 years back and now you are able to do it in Kano. You will see that Kano has been transformed completely. Completely. A serious experience. I can tell you that the thinking of Babakan Dujie is similar if not the same like our leader Asuadujie. Because what was thinking of our people, what they can be able to do to improve their lives, especially in the northern part of the country, where we have lots and lots and lots of children. The youth are there. We are talking of unemployment, which is a very serious issue. I don't know whether some of you are able to see through his manifesto. Why we call it "The Renewed Hope", that is the hope for everybody, the hope of every woman. By God, it is our duty to ensure that we join our hands together. Because what we are seeing here, Ma, is a representation, representation of women, that each one has thousands of women behind her, thousands. And we are going to get the message back. We are going back, we are going to get our people, we are going to show them, so that in the next 10 days to come, that is on the 25th, or in the next nine days to come, we are going to come out in mass and ensure that our dear party, the APC, comes out victorious. They have already formed our groups that are going to supervise our polling unit and by God, they are going to monitor and ensure that everything comes out successfully. Alhamdulillah! The second lady was also like Boko, a Barrostate. She is as the wife of the governor. And what Boko has been doing here in Kano to promote women, youth, and people with disabilities, it is the same thing that during her time she did in her state. And now she is the wife of the senator. And the good things that has to improve the life of our people, especially the women and the youth, she has no stops. She is still doing it. So by implication, we have the two pair, we have the two wonderful women that are going to be behind us 100%. 100%. I've told you, they are... What they give us is, they give to it. Whatever is being said, whatever we lay as our challenge, once the election is done and the swearing is done, Insha Allah, one by one, one by one, I'm sure they will spare their time to go around the states and ensure that whatever is the problem at the end, they are going to address. Alhamdulillah! As I mentioned, she has been doing a commitment. Even coming here, we have to appreciate her. Appreciate in the sense that she has not come empty-handed. There is food is which she has brought to the people of Harve. And that food is for our door-to-door campaign. Already, we have received a total of 15,000 rappers which are going to share among the women to ensure that we give them the necessary support, so that when the time for the vote comes, they will not vote any other party but except APC. In fact, APC is the only known party. It is the only party that is existing in Kano State. Even if you see picture or anything, don't mind it. The most important thing is that we have to rally round, we have to ensure we know the need to do and come out victorious, Insha Allah. Alhamdulillah! Wadiyata gawata gaala, mekowa mekome, wana chikiraha masia, ma wana nzo me, amukuzi, sakwadu roka chena tamiya. Wana, karama ra na bati awo tamo. Ra na che de miki alfaari ne ita, ra na che de miki pani chiki ne ita, ra na che de muna ati, munsala ka amunja kasi na aimita ru. Mutsua ati kano wa ta woba kaha da amu ta. Mushika mu tiana, ita akatani. Anta kare shuka bangasaa ati, huwa ta san sahu ne kaka kide mka chika. Apa ndabuka so mi muskina. Amma wana ma da akasamu, ala hamdulillah ni. Apa nde ke de ampani, apa nde ke de ke uchine, gasa na kuwa, cheba. Gasa akaba muna akatansu. Allaya ka oma de su, sunsoa tiki nganiheri, sunsoa na sasuraliemu, sunsoa na kutakitamna, beene ala amura. Taseke, gamiemu, kwa kwa piki ezoa. In allaaya ba musaa, allaaya ba menasara, wana sa beene ezoa. Zas, dao, seduba, seke ma kama nakuma. Alhamdulillah! Idanfu ka duwa za kugayoba ti, magana che te inini. Magana che te inini, kaya ma te inki na liaya, apa nde da ne kharaka inimi ti. Wawa lahi babakan dujie, adoka mano onenoki. Nada kama no onenoki. Kaya che, nde wana nduole niyoku ma ta wta. Che nde kapra mari, akaka masanu, duka ba kida. Wosa kabiya kosi si ba. Toyezebe yalegi, alparma za mu ojo so. Idan alla, uba initiya, ta kota mane de wana ukuje la. Ayu ko kani, bakano kane ba. Zabo da muna, aliyo wotimaga e, aharaka inini, magana na kisi la. Wana ala mari mejok, tebeke ma gomna e, akamu. Wosa uran sasa, wosa uran chuhui ne seke. Apa ngana aliwa, muna de bukata akemene wana. Akua ma kana aharaka la siya. Na kuwa de doktabari amtae ma kana. Da ba duwa se ayu kuwa, na chinjani. Wenda wala ni, alhamdulillah! Za ati ba babakan dujie, ba la kuwa ni. Ba wa ne me luwa ngamana, me tausai inpai. Idanfu ka duwa, kwa kwa tana e, ndabuka tunkaya wo, muna ta sa kere, muna ta sa kere. Me eka wana, se de amachika. Uma munsaga ya, alku ma senjira ni, te inda akajika, muna akere, abu akere kake. Idanfu ka duwa ana, ya wanchuku, muzoa kitshini. Kwa wata, nde geti kuta na, nde kwa mutani aba ita. Zabo da akaloga ti yai, damata sahu. Za mukowa kidasa, atika koda, aiki na na akasava i. Za msa akwa ta akwa ti, mutan kota akwa de akwa de. Te me iya, APC, na ke tada sa. Magana muna ta, muka za bana niu. Na iji, ra ma xinunde biarza. Za abama takadabu da uko, kashuka bangasaa, ta sa ne ta, nde ampa jali. Tika kawa ki e, APC. Ra ne sha de gawata maris. Za abama takaduku da biu. Wanda in alla ya so ya eda, e unguamna da, ma te mekinsa, dokuma ampa jali sacha. Xima aba, apa ndabuka sa isena te me iya, APC. Wala ni ma ta. Wako ta na bojia. Ya za, mushika tiki nzu tiya, da kubeyene, pani chiki nde neke ti ya wo. Wala ni za pi ma ma gi. Ubanke di alla, she kana enye zia muna sa kere. Uma yani ndabuka, wawa wana akata siya sa. In alla ya so ya eda, mune asama, mune nde nasara. Mo enna mbali, kana de kuya ganu suzu me. Senkisha ekara, tapos tapos. Kama yani, wakaya leki, amate ewa ne kita kaala sa, in alla ya eda. Wawa lahi aluwa kati ne seka zaona da, alku mosu. Kwa kwa tana, tana ndamiri ana, toya apa ndaseka imaya ucha na u. Apa ndaseka iyahu cha na u, zabo da seke, emka ni, la uka. Tamata da ma ta sa. Tamata, zabo kacha tamisa mu. Uma ani yangse na tiya magana enye. Wala ni, ba apasa, ba ana, aiki nechi moko. Yangsuwa, uva, wana da na, ba suzuwa, ani sa sa ba. Zabo da, ani na akati kakuwa, seni kuli, da wa hana tuka. Na xikara, ani da na akata uka. Amma se, ne seka imanu, kusiri, adambo pi, kain 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 ha, kupu kuwa ma sha. Wanda seka kawa ta, kabo, kamu idaba, ati, wanda akie shika, kidani da. Uma in alla ya so ya eda. Dinde oba luwa kati, suwa abu, ba ka kuwa kidani. Za mikiri ka luwa na gani mi, asama, alawa adambo mu na kawa ki. Pa yango wana kuwa, kamo seka. Nde na akie sa wa wa ya. Suwa za ma ajia inza, alawa adambo pi, za hada de wana, msa chika, kisa ala ma kawa ki. Wa ni, pa za ma babachi. Pa za ma babachi. Zabo da, takana ama luwa na gawula alla, duke ni ma. Ta apa ndabika so, ubanke di mikisa so ya bamu. Wono da kaba, kana ati, ta anchi bo ni. Wala ni, kupa, kika mana, abu aya, ndabuka sava i. Ubanke di alla ya uchi ma na kawa. Alla ya bamu sa. Indo kati ne sa kere ya ni. Wawa ya sa kati na. Babachi! Babachi! Wanda kuma muka sahu, chikirisha awa, da pani chi, seka zama sule, yang akwa ta akwa ti. Weyn alla ya so ya eda. Tikka sukuwa se, aiki anji ka ma ta. Ubanke di alla isaa, albarka, awa na kaka. Alla isaa, kama ne da aliran sa ma seka, niwa. Yanda alla ya kawa, wana sule ati ya. Ubanke di alla me de sule ati ya. Idanlo kati niya, ubanke di alla, tikama ne kogu ni. Alla, uba isaa, ajene fidoso ne shoka. Mungu de, in ajene, akere wana da ma sa ajene. Akare ma no godiaka iya ni. Uba mu muzo sa ne da wa ni.
Next coming 10 days, have fled to support. It is a lot of that, that Kano people are requested for the women. For what they are requesting. His Excellency Jahavamayi Shalala, that we want him to involve Kano women. We also want him to raise wage minimum for business to flourish. We have a lot of women farmers in Kano State. Ma, we want Jahavamayi, our President Insha Allah, to look at this, some of the issues to make sure that he compensates Kano people that are all out to vote for the Jahavamayi. We thank you, Ma. It is indeed my singular honour and privilege to invite you to deliver your remarks, Ma. Thank you.
Doctor Abdalail Marukandujie and his amiable better half, Professor Absa Marukandujie. I would stand on those two and extend it to all the excellencies that are here and all the future excellence I hope in the future. Ladies and gentlemen, I would say in front of the stage, I was really surprised when I came here. I thought we are just going to just dance and have a party. And that shows that despite what is going on in the nation right now, people are still showing love. You are here, only God knows how you got here, but the whole is packed full. And I know the pains that people are going through in society right now. But you are here, that means that Nigeria's are very resilient people, very forthright and passionate people, that when they believe in the cause, they stand by it. And women are the number one supporters. I want to thank you for coming out this much and I pray that I'll be able to answer all your questions as much as I can. But Kano State has done a lot of work for us. Because I listened very attentively to the demands from the educational sector, the health market, farmers, business communities, entrepreneurship. And when our Excellency spoke, she captured it on education. Because she is the mother of education. And she said something to our people, education, the demand on education first. For Kano State has made me what I was saying, that I will be for the girl-child education. For this very, very great initiative. Because our son has always been girl-child education. You don't, you wouldn't know if you are not gifted. I keep saying that I'm from a very humble background and maybe the present day poor. But one thing that I can stand here is because of the education, I was given the opportunity. During my time, education was free. And it was during Baba Awola's time, education was free and I had the opportunity of being able to go to school. Even when I went to secondary school, I only just have to pay for the boarding and it was affordable. And I think Nigeria, despite our increase in population, I believe that we still owe a few to make sure that whatever legacies we want to leave behind, we don't want to leave legacies to a lot of illiterate. So education is very key for development. So for education, for Doctor Zenab that first spoke, made a demand of 25% budgetary, that it should be the benchmark for budgetary allocation to education. I am not in that position to make that promise. But I will convey your promise to Ashiwaju and I believe that he believes in education. And you are talking about free, compulsory education, which Kano State has already led the way. And this is something myself and Ajia Nana Shetima will be advocating for in the near future. We are going to advocate for the childcare education, eh, child-girl edu... the girl-child education to be encouraged. We are going to encourage that. Because she's seated here, she's also educated and most women that are here are in this hall today. But most of our children that are impoverished don't even have the opportunity to go to school, not to talk about uniforms. And remember when Ashiwaju started, we put a lot of incentives in place. Such incentive has to do with the spelling bee competition that produced the one-day governor. So such incentives, we are going to come up with incentives that we encourage the girl-child to want to stay in school. We talked about their mandatory education. Yes, I know about that. And we are, I know in the past, they've talked about the nomadic education, where education can be really taken to where they are at. And I believe this is the time to be innovative, how to educate our young ones and make sure they get the necessary education for their future. And she talked about women and child, eh, girl-child education. Eh, I believe that when she's talking about women, she's talking about adult literacy. So this is something that maybe in the near future, we can incorporate and see how far we can encourage our women to also get some form of education. The health workers, Doctor Maryam Suleman, talked about the brain drain that we are experiencing. And I believe that when the Tinubu Shetima administration starts, you will see what will happen. There will be a lot of transformation that and eh, various eh incentive, possibly that they will put in place. But I can assure you that even when you look at the General Hospital, when my husband was governor in 1999, it's not something that anybody will want to go to the hospital. But I can tell you, in a couple of years, the General Hospital started growing in leaps and bounds. And I remember there was one time my mother was sick, she went into coma. I rushed to my husband, I was thinking that, oh, do we fly her abroad? She said, take her to the General Hospital. There's a unit there, they just added and that was where my mom was revived. And I believe Nigeria has the best brains and all we have to do is to reach into ourselves and do better for our nation. Our nation deserves better. And for the farmers, I couldn't understand what she said, but Mr. Shetima was able to translate to me that she was talking about the seven different agencies that the governor put in place and they are doing very well. Even in the senate, I can tell you that the distribution of fertilizer was one of the bay of eh, the Bouhari administration that they are fully encouraged so that fertilizers can get to farmers on time. And I believe that Nigeria has come to a state that we have to really be able to have food sufficiency. We have good weather, we have good soil, we should be able to mechanize our farming. And I believe that if we have mechanism, we can do a lot to even give us food. Lagos State just started the rice meal in partnership with Kebbi State. And it's supposed to be one of the largest eh, rice meal in Saharan Africa. So we can see that that is the beginning of the development that our country would experience during this incoming administration. And eh, Ajia Rabi Garuba talked about entrepreneurship. And I remember when eh, Ajia Usena Med was talking about the business community, she mentioned some innovatives and innovations that we put in place just to encourage, like, PETEX means petty traders empowerment scheme. And this is where we encourage people who are already in businesses to recapitalize their businesses by giving them grants. These are things we are going to look into and make sure that we encourage women who are either in existing businesses, those who are not will be taught some skills, to be given some skills and then they will be given empowerment grant. Because there's no point in training people and not empowering them to practice what they are trained to do. So those are the encouragement that both myself and eh, Ajia Nana Shetima will put in place so that our women will be able to make ends meet. And I know eh, our Excellency, Professor Gandujie, has really expanded on a lot of things that has been done in Kano. That's why we came in Kano to celebrate and to thank you. And eh, that is why I came to Kano to thank you for the support that Kano has given to my husband till date. Kano is a second home to the Tinubus. And what you don't realize is, about 40 years ago, I lived in this Kano for a whole year doing my youth service. I spent time in Sabongeri proudly. I didn't say in GRA, I was in Sabongeri. I enjoyed my time there. There was safety and I believe that that is what we will bring back to our borders for our children. Because campaigning all around the northern part of Nigeria, I can say I'm loving it. If I had known, I would have packed it back to spend the night. I didn't know I would enjoy myself this much. Professor was telling me that about drain, eh, brain drain, which I mentioned, that we will put incentive in place that most of our doctors will not be going away. And I can tell you the example I gave in eh, Lagos State, the General Hospital. There's a unit there that happened, that is one of the eh encouragement that my husband gave to a doctor who came from the US. And they had to put a unit, he was one of the best sought-out surgeon in the US in the day. My husband told him to come back and that he can have an IC unit. And they put it in the General Hospital and that was where my mother was even revived. So critical cases were actually referred to his unit. So we are going to encourage our people that eh, I know our young people are saying they are going to Japa. That's what we are, I think I said it right. But we want them, Nigeria is a great country. We want you to stay behind, those who are in the diaspora to come back home. And I know security is one of the issues that people are very concerned about. And businesses in entrepreneurship, they are talking about the security for their businesses not to be vandalized. We can assure you that once there is regular supply of power, businesses will thrive. And eh, the administration of eh, eh, President Mohamedu Bouhari has laid the foundation for Nigeria, for the prosperity of subsequent administration. Ashiwaju did that in Lagos, that even when we left, nothing significant was even seen. But when subsequent government started taking over, plans were made and I believe that you can trust the Tinubu Shetima eh, ticket that Nigeria, the best days of Nigeria are here. He told you, eh, their slogan is "Renewed Hope". When they say you should renew your hope, is you have hope because you are hoping for a better future. And I can tell you, the better future is here. I like to talk about my age, God has blessed me so much. 12 years I've been in the senate, eight years as First Lady and I can tell you, you can count on both of us that we are your partners in progress. Once after eh, the result is out, after we rest a bit, we are going to be planning and eh, we are going to meet Professor Gandujie. Our expertise, our knowledge, our exposure and we are going to be consulting with a lot of women and see what is best for the Nigerian woman. I want to thank you so much for this warm reception and thank you, Kano, for standing by us. And you are like we Christians, who will say, you are our King's man, eh, King's Redeemer. You've redeemed my family and we can never forget that. We are grateful to the North and will continue to be grateful. God bless you and God bless Nigeria. God bless you and God bless Nigeria, God bless our great party APC and see you eh, Seanjuma. I'm going to see you later. Alhamdulillah, alhamdulillah, whatever has a beginning must have an end, certainly. Thank you very much. Eh, I forgot to tell you that we know some people came in, they don't have transport fare and we know how, how the cash crunch has bothered us a lot. So, we have a talking between me and Mrs. Shetima, two million naira to give to the women who cannot afford transportation. We're giving eh, first lady here, rapas and eh, we'll be planning to send rice to her for the door-to-door campaign as well. So, we thank you so much, God bless you and see you around, I'll be back.
So, all the favors they eye, those against them, yeah, I's have it.
What do you know about the legislature, its role in governance and as one of the three arms of governance? Lagos Parliament is here to bring you to you, as it is, here to bring you every detail you need to know about the legislature in Africa's most populous city. On Lagos Parliament together chance to meet the lawmaker of the week. Events are critically reviewed, you can also observe plenary in Europe as I take you through the activities of the legislature.
Politics is defined as getting what, where, when and how. But in the mix, many things come to play to shape the political fortune of any country. From the political actors to the electorate, campaign to voting, from debates to policy decisions, big events happen to engage us in constant conversation. Join me every day on Politics Tonight where we dissect issues that shape our political destiny. Politics Tonight, weekdays on TVC News.
Every major news story is with many perspectives and layered with different levels of impact. What time? TVC News, first with breaking news.
Keep up with innovative, revealing and groundbreaking happenings in the world of brands and brand builders in Nigeria and across the globe. Mingle with people and brands that make the cut and the personalities that keep reinventing the trends and traditions in the marketing world. All exciting once shocked for marketing jobs. Marketing Edge on TV, you're always right on time with the right people and movers and shakers of the world of marketing as they share their views and ideas on the business and challenges of advertising. Copy to first, we just.
My name is Kashim Shetima. I'm an agricultural economist by training, a banker by profession and now a public servant by calling. I was the governor of Borno State for eight years. In the heat of the Boko Haram, we set up an agricultural transformation committee. We crisscrossed the wall and invested in the whole agricultural value chain. Lagos is the smallest state in Nigeria in terms of landmass, three thousand five hundred and seventy-seven square kilometers. But the largest rice meal in Africa, the third largest in the world is located in Imorta in Lagos. That is the power of ideas. Bola Tinubu is an idea whose time has come. Let us vote for Bola Tinubu to be the president of Nigeria, come twenty-fifth of February. God bless Nigeria.
Nigeria needs focused leadership to take the site of action to end insecurity, reposition our economy for businesses to thrive and restore total peace in the land. Tinubu is the right man for the job. Through innovation and technology, he will reposition Nigeria for businesses to thrive. Nigeria will export more and import less. Tinubu will reposition the agricultural sector for food security and improve farmers' welfare. Electricity will be reformed for a brighter Nigeria. Health, education and housing will be more accessible and affordable. Nigeria will be transformed into an entertainment powerhouse, a home of sporting achievement and a renowned tourist destination. Tinubu's government will build a Nigeria where we prosper together. He has done it before and he will do.
Kashim Shetima as president and vice president of Nigeria, vote APC.
The oxygen plants we had in the country before were less than thirty, many of them were not functional. Now, the first thing we did was to get support to activate the existing oxygen plants and then to build new oxygen plants. The federal government built one oxygen plant per state in every one of the eh, federal institutions. And later on, we were able to get support from Global Fund and from UNICEF to further build more. Today, we have over eh, eighty, ninety eh, oxygen generation plants, beginning from less than eh, about thirty functional before. And we are going to have at least one oxygen plant in every central area zone. I will make sure that oxygen is available throughout the country.
It's time to consider the education sector and the tremendous transformation recorded in the past three years, ranging from erection of over one thousand new classrooms in less than four years, all fully furnished, introduction of CBT entrance examination and results checking in government schools, job provision through recruitment of over six thousand teachers, introduction of a co-excel digital learning initiative to enhance teaching in the twenty-first century, incentives for teachers, introduction of new scheme of work prioritizing co-curricular activities in school, partnership and collaboration to boost education. All these have led to improvement in white results with about eighty percent performance. And students now excel and compete with their counterparts across the world. Governor Babajide Olushola Songwolu is doing more. Re-elected Songwolu as governor of Lagos State, vote Ashiwadju Bola Ahmed Tinubu as president of Nigeria, another APC candidate across the state. APC progress. This message is brought to you by Honorable Mrs. Falashade Adivisayor, Honorable Commissioner for Education, Lagos State.
When I was younger, I got asked a question by a friend, what is the ultimate dream in life? You see, in my several decades on earth, I have seen trends come and go, hopes dashed and deserted. But the story of success has taught us that the ultimate dream should be one that inspires you to paddle through the odds to victory. Finally, I had the answer, the ultimate dream is not a destination, it is a journey of pushing through the odds. It is about challenging the norm, to strive for excellence, to always be in motion, to never give up.
Hello everyone, it's nine days to the presidential national assembly elections and the Supreme Court has insisted that a Tunisia ruling restraining CBN from implementing the deadline for old Naira notes validity remains, just as the Apex Court has now adjourned the case till twenty-second of February. Will the CBN comply now as against its earlier position? That's the question we're asking as well as the preparation of police ahead of this election. Thank you for joining us on the program, I am Nifemi Oguntue. Remember to join live using the hash, the hashtag TVC Countdown twenty twenty-three. Now, the Supreme Court's seven-man panel led by Justice John Okuru has adjourned the case on the Naira swap policy of the Central Bank of Nigeria to West Day, the twenty-second of February for hearing of the consolidated suits by ten states. Justice Okuru said the court should not lose sight of the case and its intention as it affects the suffering of Nigerians. Judiciary correspondent Celestina Iria has details.
The Supreme Court on eighth February halted the federal government, through the CBN or any of each financial institutions, from stopping the use of the old two-hundred, five-hundred and one-thousand Naira notes. This order is to subsist pending a hearing of the motion on notice filed by Kogi, Kaduna and Zanfora State, challenging the decision of the CBN to stop the use of the old two-hundred, five-hundred and one-thousand Naira notes by tenth February. The Supreme Court have made an order of interim injunction restraining the federal government through the Central Bank of Nigeria or the commercial banks from suspending on ending on tenth February twenty twenty-three, the timeframe within which the old version of the two-hundred, five-hundred and one-thousand Naira denomination of a Naira may not longer be a legal tender. The court adjourned to fifteenth February. At the resumed seating, eleven other states brought in applications to be joined in the suits. Lagos, Ondo, Ikti, Kastina, Cross River, Ogu, Sekoto State, Kanu and Nigeria State sought to be joined as co-plaintive, while Edu and Biyasa State sought to be drawn in the suit as respondents. The court admitted parties seeking to be joined as either co-plaintive or respondent in the suit and other the existing plaintiffs, which is Kaduna, Kogi and Zanfora State, to amend their processes to reflect the same. Counsel to the state government, Akin Mustafa, due the attention of the court to the non-compliance of the respondent to the orders of the court. The justices of the Abbott Court noted that the order is to subsist pending a hearing of the motion on notice. The seven-member panel led by Justice John Okuru noted that what is most paramount is for the good of the nation without losing facts of the sufferings of the people. He adds the parties should maintain peace and they should return to court on twenty-second February to consolidate all applications and hit substantive matter.
Working towards solving this problem. It's a national problem and we are working towards solving this problem. There aren't two sides. We are affected on both sides. We are trying to solve it. Please, I want you to know, the, the, the government is not deliberately frustrating eh, the plaintiffs. This is a problem that we are trying to solve. With a little time, it will be solved. Please, I beg you.
We made the point to the court that eh, the court order of eighth of February restraining the eh, defenders is still subsisting and the court confirmed now and the implication of that is that the old notes still remain.